Good evening, everyone. I have seven o'clock. I'll call the city council meeting to order. And I'll ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean. Absent. Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. So this evening, we have Mr. John Barquette, who's a retired pastor and Bel Air citizen, to lead us in prayer. Mr. Barquette.
Let us pray. Oh, God of all, we come before you this day to pray for our city and for the world. We pray for our local leaders and for all who lead your people in all lands and jurisdictions. We pray for the people of our fair city and the people of our nation as we live amidst divisions that keep us from serving the common good. You have said blessed are the peacemakers, for we know that it is more difficult to bring a just peace than it is to foment conflict and violence. But we pray for our leaders to work for peace and justice for all of your children, that we may be led by a vision of compassion and hope. May all who lead our people seek justice and mercy and peace for the common good. We especially remember our president and vice president and our congress as we pray for the leaders of all nations, especially for a change of heart and mind for Vladimir Putin as he seeks to destroy the nation and people of Ukraine. We pray for the people of Ukraine and for all who suffer war, that they may live in peace inside their own borders and beyond. Be with our city leaders, guide them as they lead our city. Be with those who protect the common good, our police and sheriffs, our firefighters and our EMTs as they work with the difficulties set before them. Give them the ability to thank quickly and justly and keep them safe and in your care. Keep all who live in our community safe and free to live without fear. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. This evening, we have Boy Scout Troop 585 to post, to present colors. And lead the place of allegiance to.
Please stand. Attention, please. Color guard advance. Salute. Color guard, post the colors. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, will ever be just as well. Two. Color guard, return to post. At ease.
Thank you. We'll move on to term and agenda additions. So I'm going to do something a little different tonight. I'm going to table items J, K, M, and N until later in the meeting because we have a pretty full schedule. And these are items that if we run out of time, we can table till our next meeting. We may address them near the end of the meeting if we have time. So are there any other agenda additions to consider?
Which items were this?
J, K, M as in Mary, N as in Nancy. If there are no other agenda changes to consider, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So this consent agenda contains the minutes of the August 16th council meeting. It also contains two amending resolutions and a related amending petition for improvements to serve Phase 1 of Skyview at Block 49, second edition. If there are any questions of the amended petition or resolutions, Kevin Cowan. I believe it's Kevin here tonight? Haven't seen him. Is he here tonight? Okay, well. All right. So he's not here, but he would be here to answer questions, but maybe if we have questions, raise them. We'll see if we can answer. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. David. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item eight. This is the appropriations ordinance 2216. So this reporting period, CCUA debt service, as well as operation and maintenance payments totaling $182,000. Capital improvement expenses of $277,000 and $126,000 to Wichita for water. Any discussion concerning appropriations ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Make a motion that we approve the appropriations ordinance number 22-16.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item nine A. So we have three requested, city requested appearances this evening. So first on the list is the woodlawn construction update. Mr. Dakota Zimmerman with Garber Engineering is here and to give us an update on woodlawn reconstruction. And see, he brought a whole team of folks, so he must have a lot to say. Or need a lot of defense.
Power numbers, right?
Right. There you go.
Get this adjusted here so I can hopefully by the time, done this enough times, think I get this microphone right so I can talk into it well. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council member, city staff. Here to give another update on woodlawn. A lot has been happening. There's a lot more still to go, obviously, but good progress has been made. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and dive into that. As always, with the safety statements, the first thing. As much as we all don't want to hear about it, COVID-19 is still out there, it's still around, and can drastically impact our work lives, our obviously our personal health for sure, and our family's health, but also the workforce. And so we've been talking with our team internally and the contractors we work with, just monitor yourself. A lot of the individuals that work in our industry usually try to power through whatever symptoms they're feeling, and that can also obviously be a big issue with the COVID-19. So general hygiene, maintain social distance where you can and just monitor your symptoms. It's from what I've seen, it's kind of impacted people a little bit differently than the first round wave. And myself included, a while back, I got it and nothing more than just a sneezing, coughing, a little congestion. And so just keep aware of that. As always, updates have been well published on the city's website. And that website's there on the screen. And we also have the contact card, which people have become very familiar with, which is fantastic. That's what it's there for. And I hope we've been doing a good job of responding and may not have the right answer you're wanting, but we'll get you an answer as soon as we can and continue to do that. So as far as working days related to the project specifically, since our last meeting, we have charged an additional 24 working days, which puts us in a total of 151 working days to date. So right around that 40% complete. So I think, yeah, well, last time we met, that was then. And this is obviously not including Labor Day. It's a holiday, so that don't get counted. But that's where we're at right now as far as working days being charged. So current activities, a lot more movements happen around 45th Street. Getting that intersection done, the quadrant per the phases that we've discussed previously. There has been some work happening south of the railroad tracks, which is fantastic to see with that water line Wichita is working on. That's not an issue with this project anymore. And so the storm sewers already begun down there and pavement removal should start if they haven't already started in some areas already. And so you'll start seeing that grade differential similar in this photo here of them removing that out and getting the grades all working right and according to that. So it's really good to see that. That is a kind of a big milestone we've worked through. On the main line, which would be the main asphalt working north of the tracks, I'll call it that that north portion. A lot of that rock is done. There's curb and gutter done already. And so we're just waiting for asphalt to go down once the side roads are completed so that we have our tie-ins real nice. And then, excuse me, have our tie-ins real nice and that still allow the public to travel to their homes and get back onto northbound woodlawn. Some more photos here. This is probably one of my most favorite pieces of equipment. It's on Civil Projects, the slip machine for curb and gutter. This concrete comes in around two inch slump, which means it's pretty dense, not very fluid. And as you can see, it leaves a pretty nice, clean curb and gutter. So that's been a big portion there. They knocked out a big portion of that north of the tracks and we'll continue on. Some of our rebar that we have for some of the side road entrances, the Danbury's, the parenting, the woodlawn court stuff like that, that's been going on. And then this is actually a photo of the south half of 45th, which just doesn't even look like this anymore. We've got the concrete down and some asphalt coming in. This is just another photo of them putting the rock in around the drainage structure there by Quell Ridge. And another one, the side entrances getting placed. You can see this one, they had to do half at a time. So this is one of those scenarios where we got like the woodlawn court where it's one way in, one way out. Phasing that so that we can maintain access for those citizens as well as first responders to get in there if they need to. So these three photos are all 45th. There's been a lot of concrete work in that intersection there, which we intended on with Phase 2C. And all this concrete was placed within spec and getting tested really well and going down really efficiently. So kind of getting more into the phasing of the project. I know we, we've talked about this countless times and we'll continue on because it really does impact everyone's daily, daily commute. We're still in Phase 2C and be in this phase for, I don't have their schedule with me, but I would say at least another six, eight weeks is probably my, my personal best guess. And Phase 2C, they focus heavily on the southeast quadrant here. Once they get this asphalt tied in, they're going to move over here to this quadrant and do this portion. And so this shouldn't, this should take, you know, less time than this did obviously because we're not messing with the intersection itself. We're working west of that. So they'll get that portion, but this, this east half of woodlawn north intersection, that's the one that's going to get a little interesting, I guess I'll call it. Because you have to imagine, we got two lanes of traffic, north and southbound for this phase here. For them to do this accordingly, they're going to have to do the far east lane first. Get that built, just one lane, which that allows them to move this northbound traffic over and up that east new lane constructed. That in result allows them to work on the middle portion, which eventually will be kind of your turn lane there, and get that built. That's why we did this road widening early, early on the project over here is that we can compass north and southbound traffic here. But then do these one lanes at a time to slowly trickle this traffic to the east half, which is Phase 3 is the whole west half of woodlawn, north and south, the whole corridor. So our goal is slowly getting this traffic on the east half here. So that's why this one's going to take a little bit longer. But that's where we're at with this phase. That's the upcoming work. So I always like to show an area. We'll just kind of give you a better feel for those tuning in here. Got our westbound traffic to 45th and through 45th with the phase we're currently in, that will stay that way. Northbound only up to 45th. And then we got north and southbound coming south towards 45th. So the only thing traffic wise I see changing in this between now and the next time we, we have a presentation will probably be this north portion, the east half, and that'll just be moving traffic either to the east side or, or along that corridor. We'll still have north and southbound traffic. It's just the way you'll be driving that instead of all in the west half of woodlawn. It may be split for a little bit with northbound on the east side, westbound on the far west side, and then eventually both traffic on the east half of it. Does that make sense? Did I explain that all right? Yeah. Hope so. It's all right in my head. I'm just making sure I'm communicating that well. And this just steps back a further away to kind of see where our access points are. And you see people still get to Rushwood, which allows them to St. James, and still have access to Hillcrest with east and westbound traffic. So give you a little bit more of a step back of where, what's impacted here. See if we can get the next slide. There we go. So once we get on Phase 2C, we move to Phase 2D. And so the light gray shaded area will be completed, constructed. They will be working in the orange area, the north half of 45th. The east half of woodlawn north of the intersection will be constructed as well. So once we get to 2D, it'll just be this westbound through here. This traffic will be on the south portion of 45th through this intersection. And we've been having discussions here recently, and they met again this morning, about how to best accommodate this west half of the intersection without impacting too many people. We got a plan there. I wasn't in that meeting, so I don't want to elaborate too much on it in case that changed a little bit. But our goal is to try to knock this out as quick as possible because as you've seen in some of those photos, we have a pretty good grade separation. I know a lot of you drove that. It's, it's a, it's a little intimidating. And so to get, for example, this westbound traffic across this unbuilt area that's higher, we got to put ramps in, and those ramps have to be fairly long to have a good slope, a safe slope. And so if you put a ramp here, you're blocking traffic here. So it's kind of just maneuvering this around. And I fully expect by the next time we come to give a presentation, we'll have a very detailed approach of what that's going to look like. I put this slide in here because our progress meeting last, not yesterday, the week before, the Tuesday before, they talked about starting the base asphalt on the main line. So basically from the railroad tracks north to 45th. And so that's going to be a little bit of a process. As you can imagine, we got all these temporary drives in throughout this corridor. In that meeting, we were very pleased to hear that they have a plan that those drives won't be completely removed while they're putting this asphalt down. That was a big concern we had. We're talking about doing night work and this stuff to minimize that impact. So as you can imagine, we got curb and gutter. Now we have curb and gutter here. So we have two layers of base asphalt that we have to put in. So that paver will start down the south end by the tracks and work north. So they have to go through these drives eventually. What the contractors agree to do is that he'll remove portions of the drive to get half of it done, for example. Get those two layers done, put the rock on that newly pavement, base pavement, and then remove the other half and then continue on with that. So that's good to hear because, I mean, that's going to be an operation when that day happens. It's going to be a lot going on. And it's not something you can easily, that's a lot of rock they got placed. There's not something you can easily move and put back and move and put back. So we're very pleased to hear that they are being cognizant of the traveling public. And some of these, like I said, some of these areas only have one way in, one way out. And so it's very good to hear that. So we can still accommodate them, but also accommodate the first responders. So kind of recapping a little bit, upcoming activities. We want to get Phase 2C done. So you'll see them start working on the west portion, the south half west portion, and also the north of the intersection there. You'll see asphalt base coming in the next week or two. So you'll start seeing that down. And then work south of the tracks. Like I said, that's a pretty big milestone. So we'll start seeing them removing pavement there and pulling out the dirt and excavating that and getting the rock base and subgrade all done up. And that kind of falls into that 2C, 2D. Once we get that wrapped up, we go to Phase 3, which I'm sure everyone's going to be a fan of, including myself, which is they'll be working on the west half of woodlawn from 37th to 45th. And during that, we will have traffic north and southbound on woodlawn through all that. In every direction, we'll have one lane traffic. So I threw this slide in here too as well. Here recently, I, I got asked, or I got promoted, and it is requiring me to relocate. And so I will be here the next, I'll say, three to six months is to be determined. Be moving to Texas. So I kind of want to readdress our team. I want to make you guys aware. I know I've been a part of this project since the beginning, and I will continue to be a part of this project. This one has very, meant a lot to me from day one. I was part of it during the design and, and staying in touch with this. But I wanted to kind of readdress. So start on the right there. Eric Strecker, he's on site full time. He's the lead inspector. He's sitting right back here. He's been out there since the beginning and foreseeable to the end of it. Richard Milner has a lot of KDOT background. He's been with us for a couple of years now. And he's been kind of a supervisor, we call it a coordinator role, helping Eric out. He's been in tune with this project since day one. Of course, there's myself. Kind of new face for this project, not new face to the city. He's done a lot inspection projects on some of your subdivisions, stuff like that. It's Patrick Kermin, which he's back here as well. So you may see Pat or Richard doing more of these presentations. But if I'm in town, I'll definitely help out and be a part of this. So I just want to say thank you. You guys and this city has been great to us, and I'm, I'm always been proud to be a part of anything you guys got going on. But I want to make you aware so you didn't see a new face up here and had any questions. So with that, I will stand for any questions. It sounds like we'll have quite a few, and hopefully I can address them.
Well, a couple, a couple of issues. One, you said, I think you said you're going to have asphalt in the next week or two. You will start seeing asphalt along the main corridor along there. What about the intersection 45th and woodlawn? You've got that, that southeast pavement down. When will St. James be open and those kinds of things?
So my understanding was when they do the main line, they're going to fill in that asphalt too. Because they're going to have all the, the paver out there and all the machinery and hauling in the tons. So I imagine they're going to work on the base asphalt first on the main line and then hop over that same, my tense, my assumption is the same day and do that asphalt connection for that southeast quadrant.
The other is I, and I think you probably have heard it. I know I've heard it, and I think probably some council members have heard it too, is doesn't look like there's been a lot of activity the last several weeks. And I know there has been down there on the, on the, on the south end at 37th Street. But can you speak to that a little bit and kind of help us understand why we're not seeing a lot of, a lot of activity on the, on the main line right now?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do my best. Obviously, as, as you all know, I'm not in control of the contractor and nor do I want to be. I, I can't give you the, the answer you're probably looking for, but what I can tell you is what they've done, it's going in well. What they choose to do on a daily basis when they're internal operations, I, I can't give you an answer why they're there or here or wherever they are. But what I can tell you to do is what we're empowered to do is charge days. I mean, that's, that's, that's the ultimate criteria. They have an allotment of days given to them to complete this project. And our goal is that every day is monitored, whether they're on site or not on site or wherever they may be. It doesn't matter to us. What matters is this project and if they're working on the controlling item of work, if they're capable of working on the controlling item of work, we're charging days. And so I wish I had a better answer for you. But I, I think that's all I can really, really tell you. I mean, I call them up and I know they, anytime I get the emails, I could try to loop the contractor in so they see that communication. I mean, the city's really good about voicing their opinions, which is fantastic. I mean, we want them invested in this stuff. And so, but as far as how they decide which day they're at here or there, I have zero control over.
You don't, you don't have a specific issue out there that says we can't work this main line section because materials, because of?
No, there is, there is no material delays, no COVID-19 impact. There, there's nothing restricting them from working the controlling item of work. I should add that too. Thank you for adding that. Yeah, there's nothing stopping them from doing what they need to do. They are cognizant of what days are being charged. They get a weekly report from KDOT, how many days were charged that specific week, where their total's at. But yeah, as far as the project materials or, or open items or questions, all those are closed and ready for them to move forward.
Thank you. Any, any questions from council members?
Yeah, I'm concerned why nothing's been happening along 45th Street either. It looks like there's still an awful lot of curb that has to go down before there can be asphalt laid. There's pieces missing all up and down through their drains, and there's nothing along 45th Street that's going to address those two St. James and the Dollar General store driveways. And a different issue is I am seeing a lot of cars cutting through the Catholic Care Center that are coming south. Is there anything we can do to, to prevent that?
Yeah, we had a conversation.
I know I gapped and I forgot this, but my sister came to visit from California and her mapping app actually told her to go through the Catholic Care Center. So I don't know.
That's another thing. I don't know if I want control of either.
I thought maybe since you've worked in roads a long time, you might know somebody at wherever they generates these maps that
Yeah.
that those are not legal.
Yeah, well, you are right. And we specifically had that conversation before we went to Phase 2C. They were very concerned of their, their roads being a detour. And understandably so. And so what they said they would do is put up some signs. And we told them, you know, if it gets to a point where it's really bothering you, let us know. And I, I mean, we can only do so much, but we can't put more signs up. We can put more notices up. I know we put one, a different issue as far as signage there at 45th as far as don't turn left. I mean, that's, that's a big old sign. We still have people turning left, but I think it cut it down. So our, our best thing is trying to communicate that. And, and I know Eric is sometimes, like I said before, a secondary cop out there. But do our best and hopefully we sign it. I don't know if I can do anything more than that, but we can try our best to try to prevent that. Because we don't want their roads deteriorating because of this.
No, and we don't want them coming back saying, hey, you used our road for a detour and now you get to fix it.
Right. Right.
I do want to comment, thank you for getting those, those striping in the intersection 37th and Woodlawn. I think that's a good improvement. I hope it's helping people know how, how to maneuver through the traffic. Mr. Smith, I think you have a question.
Yeah, actually, I have three questions. One, how many days have we charged where the contractor hasn't been on site?
That's a good question. You got that crystal ball of how many days you've been out there? I know there's a number of them. I, I can't tell you specifically. It, that's something we can follow up and provide that information to you.
I was just wondering. I, I was assuming it had happened based on what I was seeing. I was just wondering. You guys are there every day. And I was just curious how often that's happening because it is disappointing for all of us to see. And I know for everyone that's suffering through the traffic detours, that that's also disappointing to see. So I was just curious.
Yeah, and to follow that up, Eric's out there every day. If he's not out there, Richard is. And I mean, if it's not raining or storm or something like that, we, we're out there doing the other tasks we have to do. So we're monitoring that.
The second question from your presentation, you talked about removing those temporary drives to put asphalt down and then putting them back. Do you have any concern about our brand new asphalt getting damaged by equipment as those drives are placed and removed and placed and removed? It worries me a little bit that the brand new asphalt's going to get kind of beat up or damaged. And is that something we should be worried about?
Um, no, it's a fair concern and it, it probably happens more than you realize. But what they usually do is either they put down steel plates on top or a fabric as well to create a barrier between that. Once this asphalt sets up, as long as they wait until the temperatures are right, that cools off, so it's not as flexible, which will help monitor that, obviously. They can get plates down. Once you get plates down, that stuff is hard as snuff. And you won't have to worry about it scarring up or boogering up more than you'd expect.
And if it does get damaged, is that something that we'll see and have to pay for in a change order, or is that part of the project?
That's a good question. My thought would be with this project, and feel free to step in if I say anything wrong. But my thought with this project is this phasing's, it's kind of assumed that that was needed to happen, whether you completely remove the drive or do it in temporary pieces. But at the end of the day, KDOT and the city, of course, but KDOT's specs are very clear what's an acceptable product. So if it's not that up to snuff, then I do not expect that charge coming through the city. Now, like I said, oh, I'm sorry.
The other thing to keep in mind is this will be the base. And so any surface marring that you may see due to equipment traveling over that will be covered up with the surface course. The surface course will not be placed until everything is pretty much done. That's one of the very last things they do for that purpose, to leave you with a nice, a nice surface. But we do work closely with KDOT. Richard and Eric have a lot of experience with KDOT projects. And so they're not going to allow stuff to happen that we're going to have to pay for. So if, if there are issues, then we work through the KDOT process. KDOT's got a very prescribed methodology as to who pays for what, when, and whether it's a city responsibility for an unexpected occurrence or what. a city responsibility for an unexpected occurrence, or whether it's contractor for intentional or unintentional damage, then that is all prescribed.
Okay. And then my third and final question, um, I think in the last presentation that you did when you were here a month ago, uh, that was about the time that the intersection became, you know, one-way traffic north on Woodlawn and one-way traffic for forty fifth street. And, you know, that's, that's obviously painful. And one, I think you made a comment to the effect of the, it's actually really painful for the construction traffic as well. Uh, a lot more painful than expected. And you guys were going to be discussing some options to figure out how, if it might be possible to accelerate that interstr- intersection construction to get it open sooner. Do you have any updates on that conversation? Is there anything that's being done to get that intersection opened more rapidly than was planned?
Yeah. And that's something we really looked at here in the past two weeks, three weeks even. The contractor brought it up himself. More for the traffic motions, not as much as the timeframe. Um, but like I said, they had that meeting today. I can elaborate a little bit is that we were thinking about adding a phase two E, or if you want to call it a three A. Basically a phase right before we go from the full phase two to phase three to completely finish that west half. Because with the ramps I described that you have to have this grade changes, you're going to have a ramp for westbound traffic. Well, then your northbound traffic is going to be coming right to this ramp. And so we think that if we're able to solely focus on that west half and knock that out, that whole intersection is done for the rest of this project besides striping, which that's pretty easy to do. And so, uh, that's probably the most update I can do. I didn't get a, a debrief with the guys after the meeting this morning. But to my knowledge, that's the plan moving forward. We want to get the contractor's input, obviously to see his means and methods if it aligns with what we're thinking. But that was the intent of the conversation is try to get this knocked out and get it done with and, and, uh, move forward.
Yeah, those businesses there are really hurting for business because of that intersection problem. And I get it. It's, it's part of the construction, but they, they could use the help.
Yeah, yeah. A hundred, a hundred percent agree. I mean, even we had a progress meeting where we held it at the restaurant instead of coming to city hall to, to try to show that, you know, we do care and we're trying to do our best, but I, I completely understand their, their frustrations, what they're dealing with. Construction is painful. Try to make it least painful as possible, of course.
Ms. Hamburg?
Yeah, it's sort of been addressed because people are used to northbound Woodlawn, but that eastbound forty fifth shutting down has been a real hangout for most of us. Are we still big picture? Is that what you're saying? Is you don't have the schedule to say, are we still on track for just after the new year? Or maybe spring for getting that back open? Or that's what you're working on accelerating?
That's what we're working on accelerating. Uh, phase two, two C and two D. For sure, two C will get done here in the next month or two. Two D, they should be able to get after it. It's a less volume worth of work of what they went through two C. It's that two E or three A, whichever you want to call it. That's, that's a little bit of a variable right now. But like I said, by the time we come back in three or four weeks to give a presentation, I fully expect us to have a detail of what that looks like time wise, as well as location and traffic flow.
Hey, any other questions from Mr. Dakota?
Yeah. Is there any way that we could keep that intersection open just to the fire department and go ahead and get everything knocked out within a couple of weeks? Instead of having people drive by and see no work going on?
That's what that, oh, I'm sorry. That's what that phase two ease kind of is. It's really shut that down. We can still have some traffic. Our, our heaviest volume of traffic, as y'all know, is that north and southbound through Woodlawn. Not to say that east and west is not important. That's very important as well. But we think we're, we're fairly confident there's a way to accommodate the north and, and southbound to an extent to really shut that west half down and just knock it out, not do a little quadrant here and a quadrant there and flip flop traffic. But as far as two C and two D with the traffic flow, the way it is, it's kind of hard to open that up more because then we really block off more and more. I mean,
I was just thinking if you could do the entire east half of the intersection in a couple of weeks instead of a couple of months.
Instead of a couple of months? You're not wrong. You shut the whole thing down.
Willingness on the part of every citizen to let you do that.
That's something we'll definitely talk with Ann in the next meeting. So yeah, I mean, yeah. Of course, whenever you shut something completely down, it opens it up.
It doesn't do me much good for it to be open one direction because when I go that way, I need to come back anyway. So.
Right. Yep. Now, as duly noted, we'll bring that up in progress meeting and kind of sharpen the pencils.
Any other questions for Mr. Zimmerman? I appreciate your taking the time out and give us a good thorough report and I look forward to another one in a month or so.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for having me.
Great. Thank you. Good luck with your new endeavors in Texas. It's a little warmer down there. Good luck with your new endeavors in Texas.
Thank you.
Down there. I was just down there last week, so.
Were you? Yep. Um, that's a great time to buy a house, I hear. So I'm really looking forward to going through this process. Thank you all.
Okay. Next we have a, a presentation from, uh, the Bel Air Chamber of Commerce, Mr. President Gary O'Neil to give us an update on chamber activities.
Thank you, Mayor Governing Body. Uh, my name is Gary O'Neil. I live at forty nine sixty seven North Hillcrest in Bel Air. And I'm the current president of the Bel Air Chamber of Commerce. I've been asked to give a, an update, uh, to the governing body on activities involving the chamber this current year. I first like to say we appreciate very much the funding that you provided to this, to us this year. And so I do want to tell you what you're getting for the funding you helped provide us. Our membership currently is one of the things we've been working on the most in addition to sponsorships, but currently our membership is up fifty percent. We're currently at thirty-three members. And as of today, I think we'll have a thirty-fourth member before the end of the week from our regular scheduled meeting we had today at lunch. Sponsorships, uh, we have thirteen sponsors helping sponsor the events in Bel Air and we were charged with raising funds for those events thus far this year. We raised ten thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars for sponsorship for the Bel Air events. And I might note that we were late getting started this year with securing those sponsorships. And we were begin in November this year, getting sponsorships for next year. So we look to improve upon that for next year. We, uh, increased our membership fees at the beginning of the year after we did a study to make them more commensurate with some other chambers in the area. Currently our fees are up a hundred and forty-five percent from last year. We raised thirty-eight hundred dollars so far compared to twenty-two hundred and fifty for membership fees last year. We, uh, have also updated the website and our Facebook page, which previously we were having difficulties with both of those, getting them updated. And with our executive director, Kim Madison on board now, she's done an excellent job. We now have control of those and she can update those on a regular basis. Some of the things we have done recently, we had a ribbon cutting for Couture Salon down at thirty seventh and Woodlawn. I believe that was in the last breeze. There was a picture in there of our ribbon cutting that we had there. We toured clinic in a can earlier this year, had a nice meeting there and toured through that facility. And, uh, that's been written up in the Bel Air breeze. So you know all the medical units that they've been shipping over to, uh, the Ukraine. So they've been extremely busy and we're very proud to have them in, in Bel Air. We were scheduled to tour the Catholic Care Center, but with the construction that they have going on, which is in addition to the road construction that you were talking about previous to me. That has been put off to next year. But we did have Cindy LaFleur, the director of the Catholic Care Center at our meeting today. We've visited with her. And we do have plans. Once our construction is completed, we are going to tour through their facility and have a lunch, a chamber meeting over there and that will be, uh, probably be next spring. We've been working, uh, on speakers to get speakers that we think our chamber members, uh, would appreciate hearing from. Uh, we had an excellent speaker today I'd heard previously. It's, uh, there's a group called Passageways. And they take care of homeless veterans. And they are looking for, it's a nonprofit organization. And they're looking for some help from some of the businesses in the area as well as individuals. And it was an excellent presentation. If you get an opportunity to hear presentation from Passageways, we would, I encourage you to, to look into it. But in their, uh, working with the homeless veterans, they also have been working with the Bel Air Recovery Center here, working on some of their mental and addiction problems. And they will be working in the future, I think, with Catholic Care Center here based on networking that was done the day at our meeting between Passageways and the Catholic Care Center. Once a Catholic Care Center completes its construction on some new facilities there. So that's part of what a chamber does is networking to try to put people together to be able to help each other out, grow their businesses and help the community. Speakers coming up in October will be Mark Howell, who is head of SCED, South Kent, South, Southern Kansas Economic Development. And he will, uh, be telling us all about the development work, the grants you can get and the funding you can get from South Central Kansas Economic Development Group, which is also based here in Bel Air. In November, we'll be graced with, uh, none other than the city manager, Ty Lasher. He'll be giving us an update on current things going on in the city and what we can look forward to next year. And in December, we're going to host the first ever chamber mixer that the chamber will put on here in Bel Air and we'll be hosting it. As of today, we, we were able to put it together. We're going to be at the, um, Shepherd's Crossing. They have a facility on the Catholic Care Center campus. And some of us have used it before. The chambers met there before in past years and they have an excellent facility. And it's scheduled for December the sixth at Shepherd's Crossing and it'll be from four thirty to six thirty. And we'll be inviting in some of the, uh, people that do business with, with Bel Air. Our chamber members will be there. And we'll also invite in some of the political people in our area as well. And they usually attend those kinds of things. We'll be hosting our first one on December the sixth. We're, we are charged by the city to, in our fundraising to help with the events that have been put on this year. Uh, we helped with the Easter egg hunt that was put on early this spring, the Spring Festival. We financed part of that from the sponsorships that we had secured for the, some of the things that were there. Uh, and the Fall Festival coming up, coming up October fifteenth. Uh, we're well down the way on that. And if you haven't seen a flyer yet, I will tell you that we already have flyers out ready to go. And the Fall Festival, we'll have a vendor fair. There'll be kids activities. We have three jumpy houses, bouncy houses will be there. We've got food vendors. There'll be a car show. We've got live music. There will be inside booths available inside the rec center for people to come and have a booth there and present their wares. And we also have advertised, it's all free and it's also all of the people that have, uh, helped sponsor the events this year are all on the flyers that go out and all the advertising that will go out, all our sponsors are listed there. We'll also be working on the uh, Christmas event being held here at City Fall will be coming up in December. I think I have covered most of the things that I wanted to talk about. I will tell you this. We currently have in our balance, I know the city gave us some funding last year, but with our increased revenues plus some of the sponsorship material, after paying for some of the events that we've already paid for and some already for in the fall we've paid for, we currently have a balance as of August, uh, the seventeenth at twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. So we're making progress here and I don't want you to think we're just using the money that you helped fund us so graciously last fall to keep the, uh, or earlier this year to keep the chamber going. So, uh, I don't have anything else to share with you other than to give you this update, let you know, we appreciate all that you've done for the chamber. We're working very hard to continue to see it grow and to prevent other opportunities here for business members. And if you have questions, I'll try to, uh, to answer them. I went to the school that, uh, was provided by Dakota Zimmerman and I'll try to dance around some of the answers as best I can. Well, I appreciate That's my presentation unless you have some further questions.
I appreciate all the things you've got, you guys been doing at the chamber. Uh, it's, it, uh, sounds like you're getting a very robust chamber going, uh, from what it was a few years ago. And I'm, I'm, I'm favorably impressed with, with the progress. So uh, any questions anybody may have for, uh, Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I wanted to say the same thing. I'm glad you guys are getting such great momentum going, going forward here. Uh, that was kind of the point of giving you the money to get you started. And I think you've got some more coming next year, if I remember the budget right. Uh, so thanks for the update and next time bring your taps.
Bring some caps.
Taps. So you can dance, tap dance?
Oh, bring my taps. Depends on whether I, my knee, I don't know how to tap dance very much. I, I will say that I, I think I'm already scheduled to come back in December and give you a final year update on the chamber activities and then at that time length, we'll discuss possible funding and any amount for next year if needed. So any other questions?
Ms. Hamburg, did you have, oh, okay. I guess I'll, so thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right. Next, uh, we have Mr. Larry Kleeman with Ranson City Code Financial to give us a preview of new searchable city code.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Larry Kleeman with Ranson Financial. And one of the many services we offer is, uh, providing city codes, um, and maintaining them online for cities all across Kansas, a little over a hundred cities. I had a great plan tonight to bring my laptop to get it connected and show you a live preview of our current, uh, code draft. Um, that didn't quite get connected, but I think we have a great backup plan, which, uh, fortunately a city manager has allowed me to commandeer his laptop for just a few minutes tonight. And I think this is going to go great. Just a little backup. Um, first of all, uh, for those of you who may not know, I'm sure many of you do, the city code basically is a, um, conglomeration of your ordinances. Ordinances are of course your city laws that you pass. Typically cities would just pass them through in an ordinance book. And of course it's, once you get several hundred, it's hard to figure out. You know, where was that dog ordinance that we passed five years ago? So state law allows you to organize your ordinances into a codebook, codifying it. And that allows you to, uh, organize things by topic or by chapter, to make things more easily accessible to the governing body, city staff, and probably more importantly, the citizens of the city. Um, you've already done that, but, um, several years ago, and we've taken time to, uh, update it with your recent ordinances. And we've been talking with city staff about, um, revising a few things. And I just wanted to give you a brief overview where we're at and where we're going. Um, and then I'm sure I'll be back in the coming months as we wrap it up more. Um, right now we have a code draft, a draft of your code online at belairks.citycode.net. And it's online right now. This should be a live web view of it. As I mentioned, we typically break down your city code, which it already has been. We're basically realizing the organization you already have, just so you know where things are. Over here on the left for the online version, we have your chapters, which are the major topics, of course, such as general provisions, administration, animals, nuisances and such. If you then, of course, click on one of the chapters, it opens up the various articles. Which then you can click on further to see the actual code. So for example, here I've drilled down into chapter nine nuisance enforcement, article three nuisances. And here we have your code language. Over on the far right, you see kind of a miniature table of contents. That just shows you what is in the article. You can click on it to jump down to, for example, salvage yards. Up at the very top, I might have Ty help me out here. If I click on this microscope, magnifying glass, for example, Ty can type in the word mayor and hit enter. That will show you where that word appears in the various articles or sections, sections of the code. So for example, it brought up twenty-nine results for mayor. We can click on one of them. It goes there and then it actually highlights the words. So you can find what you're looking for. So it's more, if you're looking for pit bulls or dogs, you can usually find things in the code. Makes it a lot easier. Um, this code is made to, um, be smartphone friendly. I might just try a trick here. I'm not sure if this will work. Oops, sorry there. So if we bring this down to more of this So if we bring this down to more of this size, well, pretend like this is your phone. It squeezes down, so you can easily read it on your phone. If you want to see the full menu on your phone, you can click up here. This little menu pops out, and then you can drill down further. The article contents, instead of being over here, they pop to the top when you're on the phone. So that's kind of how you navigate around the code. Again, as I mentioned, we've been updating it over the past several months. We have, let's see, if we go up here to the very top, to the title page. So it shows its current through ordinance number 695, which was adopted last month. I think we even have your recent charter ordinances. I know you've added some charter ordinances for term limits. Those are already in there as well. So what we're doing is going with city staff, going through it with city staff, updating with your latest ordinances, updating a few things based on recent changes in state laws. And so city staff and I will continue the discussion, and eventually the plan is to come back then with you guys when everybody is comfortable with it, then you can adopt this code with one ordinance, and then we'll provide you the necessary codebooks to make it official. Even though we put codes online, the official code under state law still needs to be a printed codebook, so we provide you those as well. And then the plan is, after it's adopted, whenever you adopt an ordinance, you email it to us, and we'll update the online code if it's relevant to the code, typically within a few days. And then at the end of each year, we'll send you paper supplements for your codebooks, so those are always up to date on an annual basis. One other thing I was going to show you, we have a code library on our website with, as I mentioned, over 100 cities throughout Kansas. So city clerks and city attorneys, lots of times they'll wonder, hey, how do I create this new pit bull ordinance or something like that? So it's kind of nice to be able to go online, see what other cities are doing. So encourage you, if you're interested, to see how other cities, especially around Wichita, we have Goddard online, Andover, Mays, Park City, all online, so you can see how other cities are doing it as well. So that's basically where we're at right now. We're in the draft mode. We'll be coming back to you in probably the next few months as we finalize it. Any questions on that for me?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Do we have a link to this on our website yet? I couldn't find it.
Right now, it's in draft mode, so typically, we wait until it's finalized, but it's really up to you and city staff if you want the draft to be available to the citizens.
I recommend we wait until the final official version is passed by council.
Okay.
I think that's wise. But we can access this if we type in that URL?
Yeah, the link that I mentioned to you is live. You can access it, and it does say "Draft City Code," so everybody should know that it's not your official city code at the moment, so you adopt it with an actual ordinance. But yeah, that belairks.citycode.net is where the draft is right now, if you want to look at it, provide comments to city staff and such.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Kleeman? I appreciate that information.
Thanks, guys.
It looks like it'll be a great tool. Good. We'll move on to item 10, Public Hearings. And the first public hearing is a revenue-neutral rate. The purpose of the public hearing is to give property owners and other interested parties the opportunity to speak on exceeding the revenue-neutral rate of 39.722 mils. So I hereby open the public meeting and invite anyone from the public who would like to speak to come to the podium. I will ask you to give your name and address, and then say your comments limit to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Dr. Seiberg.
Jane Seiberg, 4342 North Rushwood Circle. I guess my question is, what does the mil translate and what's it going to be used for? Does it translate into what it will cost for the average homeowner? We have a way of...
I'm not understanding the question. Do you understand?
I think I understand your question, and I actually, during my report, I'll actually go over the revenue-neutral rate, what it means, where the money's going, and kind of maybe hopefully answer all your questions.
Okay.
Your mil translates based on the value of your house.
Okay.
So you can multiply it out, and I don't know where the, you know, real quick where the information's available, Ted, to figure out how that affects your house. You should have gotten a notice in the mail a couple of weeks ago that would give you some information. But yeah, anyway, depending on the value of your house, the total tax will go up or down, while the mil levy stays consistent. And 39 mils is kind of misleading because we're holding the mil levy at the same as it was last year, but the total money coming in is higher because we have more homeowners now. We've been building houses. So that's why we're exceeding the revenue-neutral rate.
There's also another aspect. If you've got your assessment, your valuation assessment in March, I believe it was, if it went up 8%, you're going to see an 8% increase in property taxes.
Okay.
Based upon Bel Air only, because we held the mil levy the same. I can't tell you overall what it will be, because there's, what, seven or eight taxing authorities on that tax statement? So we're just one piece of the pie.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that letter that you should have gotten does break that out, though.
Yeah. It does. Very good. Any other citizens who'd like to speak, council concerning the revenue-neutral rate?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I make a motion to close the public hearing on the revenue-neutral rate.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Welch. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same side. Motion carries four to zero. The open hearing is closed. The next item is 10B, which is a...
Mr. Mayor, now I ask that, according to the way I interpret the revenue-neutral rate law, we'll need to go to the Resolution A, pass the resolution, then open the budget hearing. So you can't, you have to close the revenue-neutral rate hearing, pass the resolution, and then open the budget hearing.
Okay, so we need to go to 13A?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move to item 13A, and this is consideration resolution of the revenue-neutral rate. State law requires a public hearing and adopt the resolution when proposed budget is to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. The city manager explained the revenue-neutral rate earlier, and I think he's going to probably tell us right now. He didn't explain earlier. But the public hearing was held, so our city manager will speak, and then I think our finance director is here to answer the questions as well. So the resolution will require a roll call vote of council members.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to give you, the governing body, and our citizens a little information about what you're going to pass tonight. So what is the revenue-neutral rate? So it was passed by the state legislature back in 2021, which was last year. And basically, what it does is the revenue-neutral rate is establishing the mil rate to generate the exact same amount of property tax revenue of the year before. And that's using this year's assessed valuation. So Mayor and John, both things you said is exactly that. And then what it does is requires this county clerk to calculate the revenue-neutral rate for each taxing jurisdiction, send a letter to every taxpayer, which is what Greg showed, that everybody should have got a letter explaining that. The city has to publish a notice of intent to exceed, which was done in the paper. The Ark Valley News, public hearing was required, which is what you just did. And then the governing body must pass a resolution to exceed that, which is what you're considering now. So by the numbers, our assessed valuation for 2022 was 77.9 million. 2023 assessed valuation is roughly 84.9 million. So that's an increase of almost $7 million. So the difference in valuation will bring in an additional $302,000, and that's keeping the same mil rate. So if we were to meet the revenue-neutral rate for 2023, we'd basically need to cut the budget, and we would not necessarily cut it by the 300,000, but we would have to cut it to cover inflation, the cost of goods that we're purchasing, other operating costs that go up. We all have them at home in our own budgets, and basically, we would get the same amount of revenue as we did last year, but our expenses would go up, so we'd have to cut the budget. So where does that increased valuation come from? About 66% of that, or 4.7 million, is the increased valuation of property value increases. So as the mayor mentioned, probably everybody got notice that their values went up because that's the market. Houses are selling more this year than they did five years ago, or two years ago, or last year even. So the value of your house went up. 26% or about 1.8 million is due to new structures, so that's all the new buildings that are going on. About 5% or 322,000 is due to expiring IRB business abatements. So council approves tax abatements for businesses, and as you remember, some of them are done over a period of time, so they get 100% one year, 90%, and so those start coming on. And then about 3% or 220,000 is due to new additions. So someone adds on a room to their house, then the cost of the value of the house goes up, and so we see that as well. So as the mayor had mentioned, each property valuation will change differently. Someone's valuation may go up 1% or nothing. Some may go up 10% or 20%. Just, that's again based on the county appraiser and how they look at your house and what's been done to it. The 9.7% increase that was on that letter that Greg had showed everyone is an aggregate. That's the total for the city. So something to keep in mind. So where will the extra money go? So we built, in 2021, we built 141 new homes, and so those are residents this year that we needed to service. This year, we're at 306 new homes to date, and those residents are going to want services next year in 2023, which is the budget you're approving. So in that budget, we're adding a new police officer, public works, staff person, customer service representative, to meet the needs of all these new citizens coming in in these new houses. We also have to cover inflation, like you do at home. For example, our utilities last year, which would be like gas and electricity, were $5,000 per month. This year, to date, we're spending about 6,500 per month. So you can see inflation, how that's hitting the city. Same thing with fuel last year. We ran about 3,800 per month in gas for police cars, public works and stuff. So far, we spend about 6,000 a month. So again, cost of insurance, all those types of things are going up. You know, the other issue that we, along with most businesses, are dealing with are staff, you know, keeping good staff. And so there's a cost of turnover, so we've got to stay competitive with salaries and benefits. With all those new subdivisions, there are more streets that we have to maintain, so there's an added cost. New subdivisions, they want parks, they want amenities. We still got equipment we got to replace, so that's where this extra money is going, is to cover all that stuff. And again, the last 12 months, inflation's been about 8.5%. So the goal of the legislation was to basically reduce property taxes. That was the reason that they approved this. Ironically, the state doesn't collect property taxes, so it's counties and the locals that are giving up property tax revenues. But again, as I said, if property taxes are reduced or stay the same, we've got to cut our budget because of that inflation numbers and such. In years past, legislatures passed caps for budgets, and those went away, and this kind of comes about to replace that. And again, the revenue-neutral rate doesn't account for the needs of a growing city. So yes, we add new businesses and new structures, and that in turn lowers property for existing homeowners, but there's no new revenues paid for the added services that those new residences are needing, and inflation and all the other strains that the budget has. So that's the struggle that we have. So what are the unintended consequences? A lot of decisions have unintended consequences. And so for this, again, budget cuts are required due to salary increases, CIP, services would need to be reduced. How much? Well, we know inflation's about 8.5%. Surrounding cities are given 5% to 10% raises. We have to cover that. So it's basically the way you would work at home is if you did not get a raise for this year, and you're earning the same thing you made last year, but you know all the cost of gas and everything is going up, you've got to cover that somehow. New homes and residents require services. This is a big one. Businesses who received tax abatements are now coming onto the books, so they didn't pay taxes. They may have got 100% tax abatement last year. Now they're paying 10% or 20% or 50%, and they use services, and now we want to capture that and use that money that they didn't pay to replace some equipment, fix some roads, et cetera, et cetera. And as I said, the revenue-neutral rate letter is a little misleading in that that 9.7 is the aggregate, so someone reads that and may assume, well, my taxes are going up 9.7%. Well, you know, you really have to look at your valuation, like the mayor had mentioned. And so how would a taxing entity like the city not exceed the revenue-neutral rate? So if we didn't have to worry about this, what would be happening? Well, basically, we'd be a dying city. We'd be cutting services. Our property values would be staying flat or declining, which that's, you know, a major investment for all of us. We like to see our investments grow in value, so that would be a bad thing. No new construction would be taking place, and in fact, existing structures may become dilapidated or torn down. That's how you reduce your property values, is negative things like that. And so I think we would all agree that that's not the type of community we want to live in. And so anyway, that's what you're considering. That's where the money's going, and hopefully, that helps you and the citizens. I hope that answered your questions, to say why you're doing this and where it's going.
Well, I do appreciate the breakdown that you gave of the different things that are coming back online, that we like the IRBs, 300,000 there, and those things, because it's not all just inflation, it's other things that are happening in the city as well. We appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lasher? Or Mr. Henry? So if not, we will consider a motion, if somebody would like to make one. And we are at 13A.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welch.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch and second by Mr. David. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I just wanted to make a comment, because getting into the weeds of this, I appreciate the intent behind Senate Bill 13 and the transparency, and I actually really appreciated getting that notice. It helps me know where to direct my irritation at, and I want to draw the attention that we are holding the mil levy even, and it is true, I went home and did that calculation. It's purely like our residents' property value went up by 10%. So that's the first point I wanted to make. And second of all, anybody that's watching at home and that's irritated by this, I wanted to cut expenses as much as anybody else, but we've had several years of austerity, and putting these three positions, it would be a Pyrrhic victory had we not added these, because we were at the risk of losing some long-term staff, because they have worked really hard, and they've stretched themselves really thin over the past few years. But I've said this before, and I'll say it one more time before we vote, I hope that we can continue to lower the mil levy rate and continue to be as efficient as possible, but I feel good about this budget, and even I... And even I, the budget hot, can vote yes on this, so.
Thank you. You know the comments?
I guess I it should be noted that we did lower the mill levy last year and by more than we intended to, which is why we're not lowering it this year. So we all want to lower the mill levies. We all pay taxes. We feel the same pain everybody else does.
And it's the piece of the puzzle we have power over. The only piece, you know, like like mayor mentioned, there are seven or eight other taxing entities.
This is a roll call votes. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Aye.
And Mr. Tyler Dina's absent. Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Aye.
And Mr. John Welch.
Aye.
And the motion carries four to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. Now we'll skip back to item 10B. So this is another public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to give property owners and other interested parties the opportunity to speak on a proposed 2023 City of Bel Air budget. So I hereby open the public meeting. And any citizen would like to speak, welcome to come to the podium, state your name and address. I'll give you up to three minutes to speak and hear your comments. I see no one jumping out.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the City of Bel Air budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Welch to close the public hearing. Call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Now, can we go on to item nine 11? Or do we need to take care of 13B? So we had a procedure issue on the other on the other one.
You're fine now. You can continue to the reports and go on as normal.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure we're out of order on something else. All right, great. So now it's the opportunity for citizens concerned. And this is just general, any concern citizens may have. You can come to the podium and you state your name and address and you have three minutes to speak. If no one wants to do that, we will move on to item 12, which is reports. I will call for City Councilmember Welch for your report.
Good evening. I finally got a chance to drive down 53rd the other night. I appreciate the patches that our city crew has made. It has made it a little bit smoother. And there are two or three places I noticed where we were going to need to do something because it's soft underneath. Those patches will still be considerably less than what we would spend if we ripped it all out and built a new road there this year. So, you know, I'd like to see us go ahead and get that patching done this year if possible. And furthermore, on 53rd, I don't know what we can do, but at northeast of Woodlawn and on the south side, I noticed that there were a lot of parents driving in the ditch, trying to get into the school parking lot and not block 53rd Street. So I don't know what we can do to get right turn lane in there or something like that, but I think that's something we need to address. There really were a lot of cars backed up there.
Yeah, we've had that suggested before. So I appreciate you bringing it back up. Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the CCU meeting on August 25th. A couple of notable items from that meeting. Previously, we had approved a large amount of work to occur on one of the reactors, some maintenance that was long overdue that needed to be done to maintain that reactor to strengthen some of the supports within it. And during that maintenance that was previously approved, they discovered that more maintenance than planned was going to be needed, and that had to be discontinued and replanned. And it's going to have to be reattempted at a cost that's another $40,000. So a $40,000 maintenance item is now an $80,000 maintenance item. And we spent a lot of time discussing, you know, what led to that and the different things that came into play there. But the maintenance is going to be proceeded with just on a different schedule. And I haven't heard any updates since then. But a large part of the meeting was spent on that. We also had some significant discussion on the plant SCADA system. That's been kind of an ongoing topic with the board and the utility authority for a number of years. And that's significant to the city because that's a significant expense in the hundreds of thousands of dollars type of range for replacement. And so our former former utility manager thought that it was something that we should be kind of planning for. And then our former utility managers thought we were probably fine. And now our interim utility manager is really, really concerned about that and brought us some information to consider around an upgrade. And so the utility authority directed the TAC to take a look at that and get to the bottom of that information and help advise the authority on appropriate next step. So those were a couple of the significant items that I thought were worth mentioning to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David. No report. Ms. Hamburg.
All right, I'll go quick here. Attended the Bel Air Lions meeting on 8/24. Took a tour of PBS and their new studios. The Bel Air Lions did host our district cabinet meeting here in Bel Air at Gospel Assembly. Had about 45 people come to town from various places across Kansas. And after that, we got to have the ribbon cutting for the disc golf course at Alley Park that Mayor joined us for, that the Lions contributed the funds to build that. I had the opportunity, I want to thank Sarah with the senior center. I asked her to meet up with her, and she kind of filled me in on senior activities and showed me what they were doing over there and got to peek in on a very popular game of pickleball over at the rec center. So it was good to kind of see what they do on a day to day basis. October 1st is coming for our fall cleanup. So start getting those items put together. It's not in it's not in Bel Air, but it's just up the road. I had a family member invite me up to the Kechai Playhouse, and I had not been there for years. And it was it was a very enjoyable evening. I know sometimes with growth, we get excited about new things as we should. And I tend to forget about the hidden gems maybe that are already here. They have been there since 1983. So they're celebrating their 40th anniversary. Just wanted to congratulate them on that. And then finally, this Saturday starts the fall soccer season at the rec center. And a new thing is that the Bel Air Lions are going to be selling concessions there every morning. So encourage citizens to support that if you've got kids out there or even if you don't, because that gets poured right back into our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. So I also attended the CCU meeting as the council members, council member Smith had indicated. And I think he did a fine job. I'll add to that report. But I understand that our city manager, our city clerk, and our code enforcement officer all recently celebrated birthdays. So happy birthday to each of them. Very glad to have each of you working with the City of Bel Air. So earlier today, I, along with our city engineer, Ann Stevens, attended a meeting on the K96 Improvement Project. So this is something new. The plan is to expand K96 through six lanes from Interstate 135 to 13th Street, an eight mile section of the freeway. So this will include upgrading the interchanges at Woodlawn, Rock Road, and Web Road. Construction is targeted to start in 2026 with completion in 2028. The section freeway is connector between I-135 and US 400. So both ends of this connector have projects slated to be completed in 2025. So KDOT says there are about 200 accidents per year in this section of freeway, with 25% of those resulting in injury or death. So this road carries over 50,000 vehicles per day, which is considered the maximum capacity for a four lane, which is two lanes each way. The planning horizon to meet this capacity needs into 2050. So if you want to be involved in this project, you can get online at their website, which is k96improvements.com. And so you can see what they're doing. And you can actually, it's interactive. So you can actually ask questions on there. It was kind of, they gave us a short demonstration at the meeting. It was kind of interesting. So a public meeting is being planned for January of 2023 to discuss more refined concept for this improvement. So they don't have any design. They don't say, this is what we're going to do at Woodlawn or at Rock Road. That's not been decided yet. That's what they're working on. So but they are planning on a public meeting in January 2023. Hasn't been scheduled yet. Don't know the dates or place or anything. So the Bel Air Lions Club donated the equipment for disc golf course as Councilmember Hamburg said. I did attend a ribbon cutting. I hope everyone will enjoy that new park amenity, especially those who like this golf. I've never played that game, but I've heard a lot about it. And I don't know that I could I could keep up with it, but it's looks interesting, so. So did you know that Wichita area is one of the top five communities in the United States for human trafficking? That was shocking to me. I learned that. So unfortunately, this is our modern day slave trade. There is a faith based organization in Wichita called Hope Ranch for Women. That is working to turn the tide. If anyone is concerned about this issue, do contact Hope Ranch for Women. McConnell Air Force Base is holding an airshow open house on September 26, 24 through 25, that weekend. They have not had one for a few years due to COVID. So a great time to see what the new what's new with the Air Force. I understand the Blue Angels, which are Navy, they're not Air Force, but they will be there flying their F-18 Super Hornets. So anyway, that's good. Glad they're working together. So please continue to support Los Conados and Dollar General at the 45th and Woodlawn. They need our business during this construction time. This Saturday, September 10, there is an opportunity to donate blood here in Bel Air at Church of the Resurrection. So you can call 800-733-2767 to schedule an appointment. And also Saturday, the Substate County Association of Cities is meeting at 8:30 AM at Kechai City Hall. I will now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've gotten a few questions or complaints about noise and how that works in Bel Air. So I wanted to give just a brief update on it. So our noise ordinance is somewhat unique in that we don't have a set decibel meter of how loud is too loud. Basically, if someone were to complain about noise, we would send out our code enforcement officer with a decibel meter, and that meter would measure the noise of the activity against the current ambient conditions in the area. So what would the normal noise? We would compare the normal noise to this noise. And if it does exceed what is normal for the area, then we can pursue it through our code. Our planning and zoning director is looking at revising the code to come up with possibly like a threshold so everybody knows what too loud is. So we can set that clear objective. One of our council members asked for a little bit more about that. So we'll be coming back to council on that. But as of now, noise resulting from temporary construction during 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM is exempt from noise ordinance, from our noise ordinance regulation. Otherwise, if people complain, we can send someone out to measure the noise. Also, code enforcement asked me to remind folks that sidewalks September is coming up, and they're checking sidewalks in need of repair and encouraging people who get abatement letters to go ahead and apply for the sidewalk program. We still have money, and the city's still taking applicants through that. And finally, just briefly, council passed charter ordinances 21 to 23 in June, and September 1st was the last state suit petition. And we did not receive any petitions. So that ordinance is finalized. That had to do with term limits for mayor and council.
Thank you. I'll ask for city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing I wanted to to share. Finance department's really excited about this. And so, guys, this is really exciting stuff here that I'm going to share. But our bond rating increased. And so for a lot of people, you're probably thinking, what's the big deal? Who cares about that? Well, first of all, that rarely happens for your bond rating to go up. And so we have been rated, for as long as I've been here, as an A+, which you can see down here, is an upper medium grade. And Standard and Poor's just upgraded us to a triple or double A-, which puts us into the high grade. So you see why that's exciting? And so so why is that? Well, because it helps investors determine which bonds to buy. So so the higher the bond rating, the less risk for investors. The less risk means more competition, more people wanting our bonds, which means a lower interest rate. And the lower interest rate means that Bel Air taxpayers spend less on interest and can spend more on the project itself. So that's why it's important. Like I said, it rarely happens. And honestly, I didn't know, due to some of the the land issues we've had that I would ever see it happen, but it did. So why, you know, how did that help? And really, it was a combined effort. I mean, our city staff are diligent about keeping expenses low. Councilmember Hamburg talked about the fact that we're very efficient. The department directors don't come in and ask for a lot of inflated budgets. They monitor their expenses. Deb is, who's our city treasurer, creates that budget book, which is important and that the fact that we win an award for that, they like to see that. Of course, Ted, who manages the budget, does his forecasting, watches the trends. You know, and I work close with with Ted as far as the budget and meeting your goals. And you guys and ladies set the goals and the taxes and monitor the carryovers and things like that. So that's why it's possible. And really, we all know that Ted's the one that made it happen. So so we can say that to him today. So anyway, just I just wanted to share that. I think that's a great thing. Really honestly, never thought I'd see it because it is very difficult to do.
That is really fantastic news. And I really want to thank everybody on staff and council who's helped us get things, our financial house in order so that we can do do better things. We've had phenomenal sales of land just beyond my dreams. And I think I know that's a big part of that and all the developments. And it's just, it's a great effort all around. So thank you, everyone, who's helped us do that. So I think we need to move to an executive session. And I hate doing this with all the folks here. But do you have a question? I'm sorry? I do not know. What was this? Okay. Okay, let's do. Okay, so. All right, so what are we, items B and C we need to cover then? And D? B, C, and D? I'm sorry. Can you repeat for me?
I'm recommending you go through item E that will take care of bonds and Adam Pope's proportion as well.
What about B and C? Do we need to cover those right now as well? So we need to go B, C, D, and E?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. That's what I need to.
Sorry.
We will do that, and then we need to do the executive session. And I really apologize with the scouts being here that we're going to do a 30 minute executive session. But unfortunately, we have some issues we've got to do that with. We'll go on to do these then and cover item B. So this is adopting the 2023 city budget. So council held financial discussions, final discussions on proposed budget at the August 9 workshop. August 16, council approved the summary numbers and mill rate to be published and scheduled. And a public hearing for tonight was held earlier in the meeting. Line items can be adjusted within the budget and dollars lowered before the final budget is approved. However, total numbers and mill levy cannot be increased since it is published. So any comments or questions for Ted or Ty concerning the 2023 city budget?
Before we move on to the next stage, I did make a slight adjustment in our total assessed valuation. This was with the last month. I've had conversations with our county appraiser. And really, what this is doing, just trying to keep that mill levy exactly where we want it instead of maybe have any kind of variation. So no changes on the mill levy, just the amount we'll we'll collect will be reduced just by a little bit to make make room for a few errors that I caught on the assessed value.
You reduce assessed value?
Yeah, we had one. One, again, IRBs always get in the way. Yeah, we had one, one, again, IRVs always get in the way, but I, from last year, I tried to research as much as I can and work with the county appraiser and that's what we came up with. So I made it possible. So we try to avoid any major fluctuations. Again, everything is finalized in November, so there still could be a slight decimal increase or decrease, but I just, that, that's all I want to say before we make our vote. Also, if you want, so I know if you are this new, I'll send around the actual budget document we'll send to the state. You can sign right down here if you want. All I need is the majority of the council. So thank you.
All right. Well, if there's no additional discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hamburg?
I make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-three City of Bel Air budget as amended?
Presented.
As presented? Okay. As presented and authorize the governing body to sign.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg to accept budget as presented and Mr. Welch, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to item C. So this is ordinance authorizing providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds. So on August second, city council authorized the sale of general obligation bonds. These bonds will retire temp notes for projects that were recently special assessed. Bids were taken earlier today. The bond will be for twenty years and special assessments collected from the benefiting lots will cover the annual bond payments. The ordinance will finalize the sale to the chosen bidder and the resolution on item D will determine further details such as delivery of bonds. Kevin Cowan with Gilmore Rail is here to share sale details and answer questions. I believe Adam Pope is here as well. So as we were talking earlier with the lower, with the improved bond rating, these bonds that are sold today probably got a better price.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Adam Pope with Columbia Capital Management. We are the city's financial advisor and here to report on the results of the, both the bonds and the notes. Item E is for the temporary notes. I'll speak on both issues here. There's a handout going around that for those of you that have been on the council previously will look familiar. We hand the, kind of the same format every year. Earlier today, this morning at nine thirty, we took bids for the bonds. Today, we only had one bidder on the bond. It was Baird, which is unusual. Usually we have two or three or four or five. I will say, as you all know from reading the news, that fixed income markets have been volatile to say the least this year. Municipal bonds especially as well. We've seen some softness in the market and we're somewhat surprised that we only had one bidder. But I will say, you know, the interest rate that we got on these bonds was three point eight eight five percent, like the mayor said, for twenty years. Kind of before each sale, when we were kind of putting things together, we gather comparable transactions of similar cities in Kansas and neighboring states that have priced bonds recently in order to get an idea of where we think the bonds are going to price. And we had to do that back in kind of late July. And at that point, we expected somewhere around a three point six five percent to be the interest rate. But between July twenty-sixth, when we ran those numbers and, and today, interest rates have increased anywhere, when you're looking along that curve from thirty-five to sixty-five basis points. So maybe an average of forty or forty-five basis points. So if you take that three sixty-five and add, add forty to it, you would expect somewhere over four percent. So yes, the, the, the improved bond rating did help. So we do, we feel good that that, that interest rate is kind of on the market. And I will say that Baird is frequently the winner for the city's bonds and, and usually they're, they're known for being pretty aggressive with their bids. So, you know, we, even though it was just one bid, you'd like to see more, but we feel confident that that was, that was a good bid and well under four percent. And I do, I want to go back to the, the bond rating thing. Ty is exactly right. This is a big surprise to me. S and P calls me when they have the result and I've just always expected they're going to affirm the rating at A plus just because of kind of the structural, the way S and P does their rating, they have criteria for various components. And I think you all know the city has, for the size of the city, the amount of debt you have outstanding is, is pretty high. But the reason you have that debt is for all the development that's gone on around. You know, most of it is special assessment back. And because of that level of the debt, the size of the city, kind of always just thought that the rating was kind of capped at that A plus. But really, S and P hand was kind of forced by the performance of the city over the last really five to six years, both the assessed valuation growth, the general growth in the city. And, and Ted, or excuse me, Ty wasn't kidding when he was joking, he wasn't joking around when he was talking about the job that Ted does. They, every year, they comment on how strong the management is and how impressed they are. You know, I'm on rating calls a lot through the years, or through the year, and I never have to worry about when we're on the, the rating call for Bel Air because Ted, they send a big, long list of questions. I know it's Ted's favorite thing every year before the call and without fail, Ted gets them done, you know, two or three days ahead of time. He has all kinds of attachments that we send along, his projections, his forecasts. So it really is, you know, a combination of the, the growth of the city, the performance of the city's finances and the job that the staff has done that led to that, that increase in the rating. So I was really, I was just flabbergasted when she told me that the, the, the rating of it increased because I, I thought it was always going to be, always going to be in that A plus rating. So congratulations to the city. We also did the, the notes. I'll talk about the notes as well. Again, this, the notes were, this is kind of the first step in the process that the bonds is finishing. You know, these are new projects. There's a whole list of them that you've approved over the last several months of, of additional development throughout the city. It totaled over nine million. And again, with the, with the notes, we only had one bidder, Piper Sandler. When I spoke to the underwriter, she was surprised that there was only one bidder just because you don't normally see Kansas G O notes of this size unless you're talking about, which is hard to VICA. So the, the underwriters are always asking for, you know, we want more bonds, we want more bonds. So I don't know, maybe it was just today, coming off Labor Day, the market is a little bit soft this week. People are kind of a little bit sitting on their hands, seeing what's going to happen over the next couple of weeks. But again, when we ran our numbers, we, we expected somewhere around two thirty-five. And for the three year, if you're just looking at the three year, these, these, these notes maturen three years. That specific maturity, interest rates increase fifty-five basis points as we did those numbers. So you would expect something around two ninety. So again, coming in about fifteen basis points below where we would have expected. We provided kind of the, the debt service. Again, on the bonds, these are all special assessment projects, so those will be hopefully covered by those special assessment. And then the notes are, are three year temporary notes for, to cover construction period and then we'll be back in, in twenty twenty-five to do this again, bonding those out. So happy to answer any questions about the bond sales, the bonds in the notes and, or anything else that you may have.
So just for clarification, Mr. Pope talked about item C and then he went to item E and talked about the, the temporary notes. So the first column in the handout that we were just received was for item C and the second column is for item E.
Yeah, C and D for the bonds and then E for the notes. Correct. Yes, Mayor.
So any questions or comments from Mr. Pope? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for item C.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
I will make a motion to accept an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-two A of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith, and making certain covenants with respect thereto and authorize all required signatures.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. Any additional questions or discussion? This is a roll call vote, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler Dean is absent. And Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
And Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
And the motion carries four to zero, Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have an ordinance number to place with that?
The next ordinance number will be six ninety-six.
Six nine six?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. So the item D is, is continuing with that item C issue and it's a resolution instead of an ordinance. We need to pass both ordinance and resolution. So it refers to the ordinance, which we now know is six nine six. Any questions or discussions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-two A of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance number six ninety-six of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith and authorize all required signatures.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries four to zero. We'll move on to item E. Mr. Pope just talked with us about this temp note issue that was issued today or sold today, I guess what the real term is. So on August second, the council authorized the sale of temp notes to find new, to fund new improvements petitioned by property owners. So the temp note is for a period of three years and after improvements are completed, with total cost determined, a gold bond will be issued to pay off the temp note and permanently finance improvements for twenty years. So Kevin Cowan is here to share sale results and I think we just heard those, but if you'd like to elaborate on them, we'll certainly allow you that opportunity. Any questions or discussions on the tip notes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. David?
Make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation temporary notes, series twenty twenty-two B of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax if necessary for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said notes as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith and authorize all required signatures.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Now, I think I'd like to go to executive session and I apologize to the scouts for this because I know you've come to learn about city business, but unfortunately, we have an issue that we really need to discuss and it's going to take about thirty minutes. So if you want to stick around, you're certainly welcome to. We have more business to cover, but executive sessions have to be done and we will go and adjourn to the back room here to, to the executive sessions.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cambray?
Make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney client consultation regarding pending litigation pursuant to KSA seven five dash four three one nine, exception for attorney client privilege. Invite the city manager and the city attorney and Jennifer Hill and representatives from Burns and McConnell. The meeting will be for a period of thirty minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at nine twelve PM.
I will second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, Hamburg and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We're in executive session for thirty minutes.
So we held an executive session. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. No binding actions were taken, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I make a motion to extend the executive session by 20 minutes and open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:34 p.m.
My second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. We're back in executive session for 20 minutes.
Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session, no binding action was taken, and we will get back into our regular business of the council. We are at item F, so this is an easement, so the design of sanitary sewer improvements for Homestead Senior Landing and Chapel Landing Phase Two requires a new lift station and forced main for serving these communities. In addition to serving the two new subdivisions, the lift station will open up a significant area for further development. The city does not own the land where the lift station is best located, so the property owner has agreed to sell an easement for the gravity main and lift station. The cost of easements will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots, and there are any questions of the city engineer or city attorney. So, we're not actually buying land, we're just getting, buying an easement?
That's correct.
Yes, Mayor. All right, very good. Just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. Concerns your discussion on that issue?
And the, the, the landowner has accepted the offer and signed the easement agreement, so you're approving that tonight, and the mayor can sign.
Is it public knowledge what the price was?
Um, it will be, but I don't know what that number is, so. Do you know, Ann?
I do not. It's generally not common practice to publicly acknowledge the price. It's usually a dollar plus other considerations.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hamburg.
I make a motion to approve the receipt of easements from Envision Management, Inc. for the Oliver Street Lift Station and associated gravity sanitary sewer mains, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Motion by Ms. Hamburg, second by Mr. David. Any additional discussion? If none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries four to zero. I'm going to skip over G and H and go to item I. Considerer of bid, Cure and Place Pipe. So, staff identified three companies that do this type of work, City of Wichita, and requested bids. Two replied. The project was originally bid for only Long Terrace Neighborhood. City Council denied the original bids and asked that Aurora Park Neighborhood be included in this project for possible cost savings. Staff reached out to request bids for the larger project and again received bids from two companies. The 2022 budget contains $600,000 in CIP or CIPP lining, and our city engineer is here to explain the work and answer any questions. So, question off the top of my head is, did we get a better price per foot, or something like that?
No, we did not.
Didn't they get a better deal?
No, we did not.
Exact same price per foot?
Okay. Just one, okay.
Very good.
Fair question.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
That was the first thing that I looked at when I saw that, because I was hoping for a better price per foot, and so, the question I have is, given that it's the same price per foot, no matter how much of this you do, does it still make sense to do this all as one big project right now, and I think this finishes off the sewer lining?
That is correct.
Initiative, or, you know, we didn't really get a lot of responses, are we better off doing the worst stuff now and trying for a better price later? I'm thinking we should probably just move forward and finish the project, because prices will probably go up more, but I was interested in staff's perspective on that.
I would recommend we just go ahead and approve what is before us tonight, and then move forward. I don't foresee us getting significantly better prices. Is a penny a foot enough to save? I, in my opinion, it's not. I don't see us saving $20,000, $30,000 waiting, so it would be my recommendation to move forward with this project.
Given how long they took for the last project, is it possible we did end up splitting this across years for payments?
Yes.
So, CIP.
It'd work out about the same as if we just did it next year anyway, then?
Right, and it's CIP, so it doesn't, it doesn't matter. You can cross years on CIP.
Okay.
You can't cross years on the rest of your budget. CIP, you can't.
And in all likelihood, given the, that we're in early September, there's a strong possibility that this may not start until 2023, given that, because they already have a fairly booked schedule. But I'm not going to say that for certain. I have not communicated with them regarding schedule or potential start dates, but from what happened last year, as far as when they got started, I would, I would say it's a strong possibility that they will start in 23.
Good. Well, I, for one, am in favor of doing this, the whole thing, getting it done. It'd be nice to have all those sewer lines in good shape, and then we won't have to, hopefully, we don't have that issue come back at us here in the next few years.
I think we should go ahead and finish it, too, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the bid from In situ Form Technologies in the amount of $631,792.80 for a cure to in place pipe to be installed in the Aurora Park and Long Terrace Neighborhoods, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch, and second by Mr. Smith. Any additional discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Just to clarify, Mr. Welch, did you mean to say not to exceed that amount?
I skipped over that, you're right, but I figured if I specified an exact amount, I guess, unless they're going to do it for less for some reason. We, I can amend that to say not to exceed $631,792.80.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
So, to clarify, it's already been seconded, right? Okay. Yeah, so just to clarify that, not to exceed, there's, there was a bunch of other costs, like bonding and such, that were included. Do we normally add that in, or when we say not to exceed, do we automatically include that?
The not to exceed amount is the amount that is agreed to. Any additional work that may be required, for instance, and I forget going through this, if there's any protruding pipes, taps that need to be cut, then that would be extra work that the city staff would review and approve if it needs to occur, if it's within our spending limits. If it's above that, then we would come before you, but it would all be approved as a change order. So, it would not just, they do not have the approval to just go ahead and do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If none, I'll call for a vote. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries four to zero.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would request that we go back and make sure that we handle item G and H tonight. Those are bids, and I would really rather us not wait. The contractors have prices that they are locking in, and anytime we wait on things and those, those items.
You're right. I made a mistake, anyway. Those were not ones that I intended to skip over.
Okay, thank you.
I made notes, and I confused myself with my notes, so.
No, you're fine, thank you.
You're absolutely right. So, we will go back to item G. So, this is accepting a bid for water sanitary sewer and drainage. The developer is ready to begin development of Skyview at Block 49, second. The cost of the improvement will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. Garver designed the water sanitary sewer and drainage improvements for Skyview at Block 49, second. Five contractors submitted bids, and our city engineer is here to explain and answer questions.
So, once again, this will be for water sanitary sewer and storm sewer, the necessary underground infrastructure needed to start the development of this project. The area in blue up on the map is the entirety of Skyview Second. This project is for Phase One, which will serve the bottom street, as well as go up and serve a portion of the first cul-de-sac. So, it's not going to serve the entirety of it, it will serve a portion of it. That was at the developer's request. So, we will go ahead and do, and this is for single-family housing, we'll go ahead and do the water, the sewer, the street, or the water sewer and storm, and probably come back to you within a couple of months with the paving.
So, and I noticed that the, and I don't know if you could, if it may even make sense that we would split this up, and I'm not suggesting we do for $24,000, but Dollinger had the best price for water, but McCullough had the best price for sewer and drainage. Does it make sense to split those up, or does it make sense to do them all at once, or what?
Please no.
Please don't.
When you have multiple contractors working in the same area, it's like Playground Cop, because everybody's doing this. If something occurs on site, I didn't do it. And so, we, we have to split them up in the tab that, that you guys see, because it's all separate petitions.
Right.
But it's actually let the contractor knows that if I get awarded this project, I'm going to get awarded all parts of the project, and not just a piece of the project.
Okay.
I also wouldn't want to do anything to distract Dollinger from Woodlawn.
They're not prime.
So, we're good with McCullough as a contractor?
Yes, they have worked with the city on numerous occasions and have done a very good job.
I just didn't remember the name.
He's a fairly new for us. We've done some things with him, but I don't remember.
We've actually done quite a few.
Have we?
Projects with them.
Okay. All right. My request is wrong.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from McCullough in the amount of $420,318.20 for water sanitary sewer and drainage improvements to serve Skyview at Block 49, second, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, and second by Motion by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Welch. Any additional discussion? You're none, I'll call for a vote. All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item H is, uh, for Chapel Landing Phase Two and Homestead Senior Landing Sewer. So those developers are ready to begin development of the Chapel Landing Phase Two. And, uh, Bowman did the work on both developers and designed, uh, the water joint sanitary sewer and drainage improvements. Uh, three contractors responded to the request for bids. The cost of improvements for these projects will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. So our city engineer is here to talk about that project as well.
So you will notice that we have three bids on this project instead of five. Um, while I do not know for certain, I believe it's because of the lift station and some of the contractors like Apex and McCullough not quite large enough to do lift station work. And I'm, I'm guessing that's kind of why they chose not to bid on this. Um, Mace is a very good contractor. We've worked with them numerous times. Um, we're, we're excited to see this going. Um, this does allow Homestead to start. They've started some construction, but it allows them to continue along with their timeframe. And the other thing to note, both for council and any citizens at home, that this lift station is probably going to take a little while. It's just the supply and demand. Supply issues are not fun right now. But we're going to get, get it going as soon as we can and hope and pray that it, it comes in quickly.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I make a motion to accept the bid for Mace in the amount of $1,088,050.70 for Chapel Landing Phase Two and Homestead Senior Landing Sanitary Sewer Project. Our AGNC Waterline, Waterline Part D and Storm Water Drainage Part D. Authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Welch. Any discussion?
Just clarify, uh, my microphone was off and so that was the motion for Mace. The bid for Mace.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, uh, call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Now try not to confuse you anymore. It's almost 10, but we do have a couple of items we do need to address. So item L is our city manager, uh, contract. So our, our city manager operates under employment agreement and salary as well as defined or outlined within that document. City council and manager have worked on a revised contract to address a few items and are incorporated into the near agreement. Any discussion concerning the city manager contract? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Make a motion to approve the revised employment agreement with city manager last year and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. David, second by Mr. and Ms. Hamburg. Uh, any discussion? You're none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries five to zero. And we're going to skip M and N. Uh, we're done with executive sessions and it's almost 10 o'clock. I don't know that I want to go back to the.
How long will it take if we go ahead and do those four? Or any one of them?
Not much I want to talk. We can go right ahead and do them if you want. It's council, if council wants to.
I'd just go ahead and get them done at this point. It's already 10 o'clock. What's another 15, 20 minutes?
Then item J, uh, city code requires developer file a doc, development agreement with the final plat. And developer agreement outlines the developer's responsibilities before and after construction. Agreements for Elk Creek Third and Chapel Landing Sixth now come to the council for approval. Are there any questions of our city attorney? You're none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I make a motion to approve the development agreement for Elk Creek Third and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion to, by Ms. Hamburg and second by Mr. Welch. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item K is just the other development agreement with Chapel Landing. Entertain a motion for item K.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the development agreement for Chapel Landing Sixth and also authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Welch and second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to item M as in Mary. This is an agreement for professional services with PEC for construction administration. Uh, so they've been assisting the city. PEC has been assisting the city with preparing plans for the 2022 street repair projects in order to ensure compliance with a project this size. Staff believes inspection are needed throughout the project. The city does not have the needed personnel to properly inspect projects and therefore typically contracts this work with engineer, with engineering firms. So city staff worked with PEC to provide a cost of this work since they assisted in the design and bidding of the project. In addition to making sure construction conforms to city's standard specifications, PEC will also take care of construction administration services, which includes reviewing pay requests and answering any questions that arise. So city engineer is here to explain this process and answering questions.
This is very similar to what we do on all of our other projects. Um, this will be on a part-time basis. They will swing through as needed. When we're doing the patch repairs, it will probably be once a day for a couple of hours. Talk to the contractor, hey, how's it going? See what the contractors are doing. It is a drop-in inspection. It's not a scheduled inspection, so they have an idea. Contractor never knows when they're coming in. So we have a really good idea of what the contractor is doing when folks are not around. Um, if myself and other city staff have time, we will also be dropping in on these projects on a base on, as we have time, as time allows. So that's, it's important to make sure that the money that we're putting into the streets is what we need to have done and what we're asking to have done. So I think the inspection is very well worth the payment.
And to be clear, this is for the repairs, the $1.4 million project we're doing for residential streets, south and west of Woodlawn and.
That is correct. The, this is also the, um, micro-surfacing that will be involved in that 1.0 million or 1.4 million dollar project.
Mr. Mayor, also not clear, is this a not to exceed number? Or is this a number based on the hours they bid and their hours could exceed that?
It should be a not to exceed number. Um, I accidentally forgot to put that in. But if there is any question that hours will be exceeded due to whatever circumstances, that will come back before council.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
So I'm not sure I exactly understand how this will work. Is this, uh, are we just directing them to do inspection or observation on these projects? And they're just going to kind of figure out what makes sense to do? Or is this more of an engagement where you'll pick up the phone and call them and say, hey, would you please go do observation on this? And then they bill us time and materials for what they, what they actually, the work they actually perform?
This will be a, more of a PEC-directed, um, engagement. But it will be for time and materials. We'll have a pre-construction conference. They'll get an idea of when the contractor is going to be working, when they're going to start. They're going to be in communication with the contractor, understanding when stuff is going on. And then we have, I've already talked very closely with them and we both have a good understanding of what I'm expecting. I'm not expecting a eight-hour day, all day, every day. I'm expecting an hour to two hours a day. Or if they're not doing much work, then maybe a couple of hours every other day. So we have a very good understanding. I will be monitoring the time that they are spending on this, so it does not go overboard quickly.
But you feel like it'll be sufficient? Okay.
I don't feel like this project would need a full-time inspection.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement for professional services with PEC for construction administration and construction observation services for the 2022 street repairs and the amount not to exceed $62,500 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Two seconds. So I'll thank Mr. David. Uh, I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item N, so this proposal for water and sewer master plans. So in the past few years, the city has been involved in, with 22 different developments. And a master plan is needed to ensure that we are able to serve all of our new developments with adequate pressure and flows for water as well as flows for sewer. The city does not have the required staff to, or equipment to produce master plans of this type. Staff created an RFP for the water and sanitary sewer master plans, which was sent to four firms. The goal of the master plan is to understand the capabilities of the current infrastructure and understand what improvements we will need in order to fully service all potential customers. The cost of the project will be paid for out of our water and sewer funds. And three firms responded with proposals and our city engineer is here to explain the project and answer questions. So, um, one question I had was, do we already have a plan and we just need to update the plan? Or is there not a plan right now and we're starting?
There's a kind of plan.
There's a kind of.
Um, but we had a quasi-master plan that was developed probably 10 years ago. And it only covered a small area of the city around, um, the Sunflower Commerce Park and a little bit north. And it just looked at what we would need to extend it. It was a very high-level plan. It was not looked in detail at the capabilities of our system. It just looked at, okay, if we're going to build out this area of land, what do we need to service that area? So kind of, but not really. Um, with that plan that was actually developed by Schwab Eaton, um, they did have a map of our current water, of our current 10 years ago, water system and sewer system. However, that map and all of the associated documentation was lost in a flood. And I, I, I'm sure they had backups and backups, but it was a disastrous event and it no longer exists. So yes and no. We have a paper copy of that a long time ago, but this is pretty much a start-from-scratch plan. We do have some information in GIS that they will be working with, but there's additional information that needs to be collected, which is part of the reason of the cost.
So you having said that, now raise the concern about the record retention and what we're doing to protect those records going forward. And I know it's a separate discussion, but I just wanted to know if we're, we're thinking in those terms about what's happened there.
Yeah. And that was, at the time, those records were solely kept by Schwab Eaton. I do not believe the city ever had a copy of it. And part of it was a specific program. Um, I don't remember the specific program that they used. It was probably EPA net or something similar. But that's not something that we as a city have access to. We don't have that program. So any files that they would have given us aren't going to be of much use. Plus 10-plus years ago, that technology has increased so much. And a lot of the programs that they use then aren't really around or able to be transferred. So even if we still had a working model, it, the likelihood of much use out of it, it's been too long.
So, and, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds about this, but you're keeping now all these records of these engineering drawings. And I know some of these plats have to go to, to county and be registered, but not everything goes to county and be registered. But you're keeping records of all those.
That is correct.
Okay.
And we have been having KRWA come in and assist us by, they come in and collect the information. When we put up a new subdivision or multiple new subdivisions, they come in once or twice a year and help us collect that information and add it to our GIS maps. So it's, it's pretty safe. That's kept up on the cloud. So you know, in case the, the cloud comes down. Mr. Mayor. Oh, sorry. I, just one question I had, and maybe I'm reading too much into this one word in your staff report. But you say, we feel that the PEC proposal would provide adequate detail. I know it's a pretty big junk between PEC and Garber, but would, would it be a good investment that you see getting more would now be the time to spend a little bit more and get more or? In, in my opinion, I don't believe that spending the additional 50, 60,000 gets us enough for it to be worth it. It's going to get us every single manhole and detail that you're going to be able to do more with. But with where we're at, the size of community, the developments that we're looking at, I think the PEC, what PEC is giving us is going to be more than adequate for what we're looking for.
Mr. Mayor, I had, had the same question on a different angle. Is that going to put more on your staff to take the low bid?
What, and I talked with.
Can your staff handle it, I guess?
And I talked with Dave Liker, Public Works Director, and we both feel for that additional 50 to 60,000. It's something that we can work with KRWA to collect over a five-year period. Um, I don't think it's something that we need to have right now. Um, you know, i- if you're talking a Chicago area system where you've got, you know, thousands and hundreds of thousands of manholes, it's, and leaky manholes. It's important to know where everything is coming from. But we've got a pretty decent system. We've done a lot of cured-in-place pipe. It's not, I, I don't, and we've, we've winded all of our manholes. I don't really see that there would be additional value or enough value to be worth spending that extra money. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
I think I had asked Mr. Lasher this question, but I, I didn't, I don't remember seeing the answer to it. Did, did we ask you, uh, the Utility Advisory Committee to review these proposals?
We did not. If, if it's something that is dealing directly with the citizenry, um, regarding like water rates or something that impacts their lives directly, then that's when we typically go to the UAC. But since this is kind of a more overarching planning, that the UAC doesn't review subdivision plans. Um, they don't review a lot of stuff that I look at. They don't have that engineering background. And so I didn't feel that it was necessary or, I'm not going to use the word appropriate, but necessary for them to review it.
Thank you. Was there somebody, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I had a, a question. We, uh, the city hired Burns and McDonald to do some work, um, on investigating our utilization of sewage and some stuff with the CCUA. And some of that included, uh, studying our internal system. Is, is there any overlap of this engagement that we're going with what we've already hired Burns and McDonald to do?
There may be some, but I don't think that there is enough to be able to bring the cost to in line with what PEC gave us. And in talking with Brian earlier, then he said that, you know, they are going to be putting in some, some sewer meters, but he didn't think that they could drop the cost down to match what PEC had provided.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion concerning this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I make a motion to accept the proposal from PEC for $134,000, uh, in the amount of $134,000 for the water and sanitary sewer master plans and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Have a motion ready to have a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Uh, item 15, discussion and future issues. So next week is our regular workshop, September 13th at 6:30 PM. And I'm hoping that works for everyone. So far on the agenda is our fee schedule and Kevin Cowan will discuss special assessments. Better understanding what special assessments do. Is there anything else we need to be talking? I think that's probably funny, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'm wondering if, uh, it might be a good idea to schedule our workshop next week as a special meeting instead of a workshop in case we need to have an executive session, uh, like we did tonight.
I have no opposition to that. We just need to get the approval to do a special meeting because there's a process we've got to do there, but yeah. Uh, but a special meeting, then we just cancel or end the meeting and go into a workshop?
Right. Or we can.
Thinking?
Or we can just have the discussion in the meeting.
Well, that's true.
It matters. Just put it on the agenda and.
Yeah, you can have a discussion without taking action. That's true.
As long as we know it's on our agenda, we can just have a special meeting and call it that.
Yeah, I, I see where you're going and I agree based on earlier conversations that we should have a meeting.
Okay. Then let's do. Then let's do a special meeting and all our staff to put, prepare the letters and what we need to do and all that, so.
Do we need a motion for that?
I think we need to sign a.
You don't have to do a motion, you can just sign the letter.
Yeah, so there'll be a letter they'll draft and we'll sign the letter and now that's all you need.
Right.
Uh, do we know about how long these people are going to talk? Could we have our regular, our special meeting at seven o'clock and start with something else at six thirty? Or should we move the whole thing to seven and?
As far as the content, I would recommend that you have a special meeting, close it, and then go into workshop. Only because I know that the mayor and the conversa, likes to have a conversational approach to those meetings where you're not, you're not reducing your standard for how you run your meetings. You're, um, still keeping that decorum that you require for your council meetings. But then you're adjourning into a workshop to address it in a more casual, interactive way. So that's the only reason I'd recommend to have a workshop.
I think I wasn't clear because I kind of meant just backwards of what you said was that we adjourned the workshop and convened the meeting at seven. But whichever we works, I, I don't care. It's just a.
I would advocate doing a special meeting at six thirty and as soon as, in the workshop, as soon as we're completed, whenever we complete.
Okay.
This is a suggestion.
It's easier to schedule that way.
Right, well, I don't know, we, right now, we don't know what we don't know. We don't know if it's going to, if it's going to be a ten-minute thing or a thirty-minute thing or an hour.
Some, somebody's going to be waiting either way, so.
Yeah, someone's going to be waiting, one way or the other.
Well, and I've seen what we pay Gilmore Bell with Bond, so he can wait.
Give him some pants and shoes and let him have at it.
Okay, okay, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, the second by Mr. Welch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Never getting negatives on that. We are adjourned until next Tuesday.